That was not edited at all. Oh, no, that was not edited. No, it was raw.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here at today's City Commission meeting. We will now call this committee to order. We will start at the roll call. We will begin with our Commissioner District Two.
Fielder Herrera, District Two President.
Governor Bowie, Commissioner Lawrence.
David Johnson, Mayor.
Abel Garza, Commissioner Lawrence.
Jamie Clark, Commissioner District Four.
All right, that's the record reflected. We do have five of the seven commissioners present. Forum has been established, and we will move forward with the invocation. Today, we are happy to have us Pastor Matthew Walker. Thank you, Pastor Walker. If you want to make your way on up to the podium here, Restoration City Church. You can give us in the invocation. Then we will have myself, Eunice.
Amen. Thank you. About your head, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. God, we thank you for bringing all of us here together, all of these leaders here together. Lord, and I just pray that you would speak to each and every mind and heart that is here today. God, that you will lead and guide and direct each and every person that's here, Lord God. Lord, I pray, Lord, that they will make decisions, Lord God, that will better our community. Lord God, that they will revive our community, restore our community, Lord God. And God, we just, we put everything into your hands, Lord God. We pray, Lord God, that your presence, Lord God, will be felt here today, and it will be felt throughout our community, Lord God. Lord, we just, we give you all the praise, the glory and honor, Lord. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the prayers to the right side. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, Texas flag?
On our Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Pastor Walker, if you have anything you'd like to share with us relative to your church.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So my name is Matthew Walker. I moved here two years ago to take on a project to renovate a church on Logan Street, on the corner of Logan and 38th. It's towards the back of the neighborhood, right off of Moses Lake. It's a church that's been shut down for a few years. It was in terrible condition. And so, we've been working on it for two years now. And March 26th, we will be celebrating our opening day. And so, we invite each and every one of you to come out. Service starts at 10:30. And our desire as our church, as Restoration City Church, is to restore parks to God and people together. And what we want to do is we want to, you know, inject ourselves into the community. We want to, we want to help widows, and we want to help the community, whether it's parks, whether it's restoring some of our buildings. We want to get our hands dirty, and we want to help the community restore itself. And then, we also want to help at-risk youth. So those are the three goals that we have at Restoration City Church that we believe will help the community grow and the community just, you know, come to know God and love God.
Thank you so much. Thank you. At this time, we're up to proclamations and presentations. While we don't have any proclamations, we do have presentations. There's the People's Service Awards. We want to ask Ms. Creo McCall of Parks and Recreation to come on up. 10 years. Just a few others to mention. Ms. Dana Martinez, the Police Department, 10 years also. This one, Ms. Turner of the Police Department. Ms. Turner has been with us for 15 years. We have Mr. Ramirez Hookman in Public Works for 15 years. Thank you for your service as well. And then, we have in our fire department, it's like you just called yesterday. 35 years, Chief David Dunn.
Mr. Mayor, could we get a picture with all of you at the center?
Absolutely. Chief, chief.
Plus our other two recipients.
Sure. Ms. McCall, if you make your way back up, Ms. Turner also. And before you take your seat, Chief Zachary, we'll let you have a few words after 35 years.
Do you think after 35 years, we'll have something to say?
I wouldn't think it would be great, God. This too. So 20 years ago, in this very same room, Chuck Doyle came up here and said that other communities around and the fellows that run Washington, D.C. can learn a lot by watching what goes on here in Texas City. And it's as true today as it was then. The names and pieces and faces have changed, but we keep moving forward. And we do it out of love in the city for no other reason. So if that ever changes, we'll have problems. But I don't see that changing. So the changes in the fire department over 35 years have been nothing but phenomenal. And they came out of stations that were... Oh, they were fire stations, but that was about it. Now, we have three new stations. We have a new station going up. We have 18 new firefighters. We're working right now trying to fill the new station. We do EMS transport now. We do hazardous materials now. We do water rescue, industrial fire, neighborhood improvement. Source suspension sometime. And we have a new training field. And if someone had said 35 years ago, this is what else would go on in the next 35 years? Nobody would have believed that. The citizens of Texas City are the absolute best. So in the fire department, we're kind of inventors and engineers and thinkers. What's a better way to do this, and what's the cheapest way to do this? And we always come up with these bright ideas. And you brought into the community the business I wanted to see. If a business owner could do this for you. And what I've never heard in 35 years is, "I can't do that. Go away, you punk." If they can't do it, they send you to who can. And we get it done. There's absolutely nothing you can't get done in Texas City. You can just get in touch with the right people. And everybody knows who the right people are. That's just phenomenal. And I wish I could tell you I had to know 35 years spent with you. My list of goals and objectives has gotten rather short. But it's been wonderful. I will look forward to everybody I hear and those before. I get nothing but appreciation for everything the citizens have done for me. When I got here, I had a 1970 Boss Mustang that barely run, and it's like, oh. So it's been great, and I thank everybody.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. Ms. Knoxen, we are now at item 4B. We're going to recognize our very own Ms. Connie Haley. Ms. Haley is going to come on up for achieving her... Ms. Holden also, I just want to do the honors of that. Thank you very much, Ms. Holden.
Good evening.
Evening.
Deputy Court Clerk Connie Haley of the Texas City Municipal Court has completed all requirements for Level Two of the Municipal Court Clerk Certification Program and was awarded certification on January the 17th. This certification is by the Texas Court Clerks Association in conjunction with the Texas Municipal Court's Education Center, the Texas Municipal Courts Association, and Texas State University of San Marcos. To qualify for Level Two certification, clerks must have previously achieved Level One certification. They must also complete 40 hours of continuing education and pass a rigorous four-hour exam. Areas covered by the examination include legal research, ethics, fairness, and diversity, processing cases, legal codes and statutes, records and case law management, financial management, bond forfeitures, domestic violence laws, and computer literacy. Connie has served in the municipal courts since 2006. She is currently responsible for handling our juvenile and code enforcement documents along with many other responsibilities. She's a valued member of our court team, and I am honored to have the opportunity to work side by side with her every day. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Haley on this huge accomplishment and thanking her for 17 years of dedicated service to the municipal court and to the citizens of Texas City.
Is there anything you'd like to say or add to that?
No, sir. It was a struggle, but I made it. I'm very proud of it.
Congratulations. We're now up to the portion of our agenda where we do reports. We will have first our annual Bayou Golf Course report. Mike Skiba of Golf Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and Staff. For those of you that haven't come in, my name is Michael Skiba. I'm the head golf professional at Bayou Golf Course. And I'll go ahead and get started with this year's annual golf report. This first slide is a revenue and round report. It goes back three years to the 2020-2021 fiscal year. We did $850,000 total dollars in revenue with $25,781 rounds. And then, the 21-22 fiscal year, we did $880,000 total dollars in $27,200 rounds. And if you look at the rounds compared to the total revenue, it kind of compares evenly with 25,000 rounds. We did $850,000 total dollars. And then, as the rounds go up, you'll see the revenue goes up as well in the total dollar in the 2021-2022 fiscal year. Currently, in the 2022-23 fiscal year, we are at $317,000 with 9,944 rounds. And right now, we are 11% ahead of where we were in the 21-22 fiscal year. So we're going to try to keep striving and keep those rounds and revenue continue to go in the correct direction. This next slide is a golf now report. This is our online booking engine that we use at Bayou Golf Course. This is a calendar year report from January 1st to December 31st, 2022. We did 1,380 total rounds with $39,545 in total revenue with an average rate of $28.06 per round. This map beneath these numbers shows where all these golfers are booking from. Most of them are in Houston and Texas. But as you can see, there's some from outside the state that are coming to see us when they're on vacation or some, as we call it, snowbirds that come from the winter with the states with a lot of cold weather that come down and see us. So we're happy to have those customers as well. This next slide is the major golf tournaments of the year. The number one is the Chamber Golf Classic with 404 total golfers. Next is United Way Golf Classic with 286 golfers. And third is the Dow Winter Golf Classic that we just had in February with 188 total golfers. Now, we have 16 total golf tournaments this year with 1,934 total golfers. This excludes high school golf tournaments, which I'll get to here shortly. It's actually this slide. We hosted nine total high school tournaments this year, with eight with Texas City and one with Hitchcock High School. Texas City hosted eight golf tournaments with a total of 537 golfers. And Hitchcock hosted one golf tournament with 96 golfers. So we're still really striving to grow up the junior game at golf, Bayou Golf Course. Next is our Junior Golf Clinics. We host two every year, one in June and one in July. The one in June of 2022, we had a total of 22 participants. And the one in July, we had 18. Pre-COVID, these numbers were a little bit higher. We're continuing to try to strive to make these numbers go up and get back to our norm. But we still did host these clinics this year. The kids had a really good time. Next is the First Tee Program. This program got implemented in 2017. This program really strives to show not just growing the skills in your game of golf, but they really try to teach life skills and the rules of golf and growing as a young adult. Some accomplishments from them this year was the drive, chip, and putt contest. We had six members from Bayou Golf Course qualify for the local qualifier. Five members qualified for the regional qualifier as well. We also had nine total students make their high school golf teams. Three from Clear Lake High School and six from... Excuse me. Three from Clear Lake High School and six from Clear Creek High School. The First Tee Program also does a community service project for us at Bayou Golf Course as well. Two separate Saturdays in January and February each year, they come out and they pick rain balls and pick rain balls on the driving range. They fill in divots with sand on the driving range and edge the bunkers on our pitch and putt course. So we're really appreciative that they go the extra mile and help us out with us helping them out. The next is our new restaurant vendor, The Yellow Dog. Joa and Janay Sherman are in the back here. They're the owners of The Yellow Dog. Can't thank them enough for the great job that they're doing. I just wanted to point out the menu on the left-hand side is their breakfast menu. They call it the Tee Off Menu. And on the right, it's the Turn, which is basically a lunch and dinner menu with unforgettable snacks on the right-hand side. My personal favorite item on this menu is the Ripped Sandwich. Notice I said sandwich. It's the most delicious, probably, sandwich I've ever had in my life. It's very, very good, along with breakfast tacos, sausage biscuit on the breakfast menu, the burger, delicious. You're very hard to find something that's not good on this menu. Can't thank Janay enough for all she does out there and the support she gives me on a day-to-day basis. Thank you all very much. Next is the Yamaha Golf Karts. Now, we got these carts almost a year ago, in late March of 2022. Just wanted to point out some additions that we made to these golf carts. One is on the right-hand side, you can see where our logo is. That's a rain cover that comes out and covers your clubs when it's raining. Some people utilize it all the time just to keep their clubs covered. That's one accessory. Another one is, we undercoated the frames. With the last fleet of golf carts that we had, we had frame issues to where they would rust as the climate that we're in. And they started to kind of basically split down the middle. And we had a lot of issues with those. But what we did was, on this next lease, we did a four-year lease instead of a five. That's actually going to help us a lot going into that fourth year just to make sure that we're still hanging tough with these golf carts and that they're going to last a long time. And we're a year in now, and they're doing really, really well. Members and guests are loving them a lot, along with golf tournaments. Next is the back nine par path repair that we had done back in 2022. So we actually had a total of five holes that we had repaired, even though the back nine has nine holes. The holes were 10, 11, 12, 16, and 18. Now, holes 13, 14, 15, and 17, they had been done prior about nine or 10 years ago. And these were actually redone with concrete. But this time, we did asphalt, and it actually ties in to the golf carts as well. With the golf carts issues that we had back over the last four or five years was due to these paths having certain potholes in them and things like that, just deteriorating. And that's what's actually making this new fleet last, what I think is going to help this fleet last a really long time and possibly pass the four years. And finally, this is my last slide, is the... This is hole number three, bridge just past the tee box. Can't thank Jack Carlson enough in Public Works. They really quarterbacked the thing and took it... You know, they basically did it. And they did an excellent job. And it's... I wish I had a picture of before what this looked like because now I can breathe during golf tournaments and weekends when we're really, really busy when we're driving across the bridge. I was getting a little nervous there for the last couple of months. But Jack, thank you so much for you doing Public Works. Y'all did a great job on this project. Thank you so much. That's all I have right now. Is there any questions?
Any questions on Mike?
Thank you. Thank you all.
We're now up to the public comment portion of our meeting agenda. I have one submission to speak. We have Ms. Janay Sherman, Yellow Dog at Bayou Golf Course.
Hi, everyone. First off, I wanted to say thank you very much. Appreciate all your support. I've just had outpour of just love and just appreciation. And just the energy has just been great here at The Yellow Dog and Bayou Golf Course, especially with the support of Mike and Mr. Harris as well. We're just grateful for all the amazing reviews. In addition to, we've been trying to create more jobs for the community. You'll find some of my employees here, I like to call them cohorts. Carly is just a high school student here in Texas City that looks forward to working with more. Also, Tia, who's a resident here as well. So we're just excited to watch them grow as they are young minds looking to grow. And we're going to help nurture that, Joa and I here at The Yellow Dog. Just want to share some things that we're doing great at The Yellow Dog, some advertisements that we're going to be doing. So we're offering some online ordering on the golf course. So Friday through Sunday, golfers will be able to order food and have it delivered to their hole or pick up on the turn, which is going to create a great amenity and bring in more business to the course as well because you can't really find that a lot of public golf courses. And in addition to that, you can find things like our favorites, like the bacon and egg sandwich, like our homemade ham and cheddar bread. And of course, Mayor Johnson's favorite, the Ripped Sandwich, which can be made in two to three minutes. So these are quick items that people can get and keep the course moving very well and also keeping the amenities there a lot stronger than what you would find at most public golf courses. In addition to that, we've collaborated with the Bayou Golf Course and Mike. And what we'll be doing is offering some all-inclusive dining and savings. So some of those include like playing 18 holes and a $25 food and beverage credit for $50. So that's an anytime golf credit. That's really just going to be great. And also, it'll be helpful for when we're trying to reach out to those hotels and maybe get some more people that are traveling in. So we're going to reach out to some of the local hotels and resorts in the area to bring in more people. In addition to that, they can take some golf lessons with the pros and have a food and beverage credit included in that. So in addition to that, there's going to be some more savings, which are going to be on the Yellow Dog's website. And what we'll be doing is making sure that we share those proceeds with the Bayou Golf Course and we're getting more money for the course. Some other specials that we're going to be doing is we have our Monday Morning Madness special featuring green eggs and ham and our other full breakfasts that have beverages and some other items included in that. Also, we have our Takeover Tuesdays and Thursdays. We also call it our TNT. Takeover Tuesdays and Thursdays featuring specials, priced food, and also food and beverages between 11:00 and 4:00 P.M. Other offerings are some things for our vegans and vegetarians. I think it's very hard in the area for there to be those items. So we're going to be preparing some vegan and vegetarian items for the community. We also have our loyalty program that you can actually come in. Golfers can get those programs and they can sign in on our online system so they don't have to keep up with a card. They can use that with their beverages at their spending in addition to the food that they purchase. We also have city and educator discounts. And all of these copies, you can really find outside we have here. We're also going to put some on the chamber. You can find them on our website, Facebook, and Instagram. That's pretty much it because I'm not going to hold y'all long. But I appreciate y'all for keep supporting us, and we love you guys. Thank you.
All right. Thank you both, Janay and Mr. Joel Sherman at Yellow Dog for all you do. I'm overdue for a Ripped Sandwich, so I will be coming back real soon. All right. We're now up to our consent agenda, Commissioners. You have before you items A through H for your consideration. If there's any of them that you would like to pull for further discussion, I'm used to it this time.
I would like all items C.
And I would like to pull item G.
G, item C.
I'm going to approve all items on a consent agenda with the exception of item C and G.
I mean, motion to... I second. Right. It has been moved to approve by Commissioner Jamie Clark and seconded by Commissioner Herrera to approve items A through H with the exclusion of C and G for further discussion. All in favor, say by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item C, we consider and take action on resolution number 2023-37, authorizing the payment of $64,545.27 to Dickinson Independent School District for a sanitary sewer easement. Ms. Golden?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor. So this is... So we have a project that's going on as part of the capital improvement program that Impact Bees can be used to pay for. It is a force main that is from the Lagomara Lift Station. It goes under I-45 all the way to a point that's just upstream of Lift Station Number 29. Both of those lift stations have the capacity to pump the additional sewage, but the force main is necessary for the conveyance. And this is easement across the DISD property. It's the junior high that's being built on Central Park Boulevard. And so, this is, you know, part of the route, and we're having to acquire it to be able to build the torse neck. It's all budgeted. It's all per the budget. And it's being funded again from Impact Bees. And we actually have passion bank.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions on Ms. Golden? If not, we're going to take a motion.
So we'll approve item C.
I second.
It's been moved to approve item C by Mayor Pro Tim Bowie, seconded by Commissioner Knoxen. All in favor, say by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have addenda item G. We consider and take action on resolution number 2023-041, approving repairs to the water slide and the platform at National Park Family Aquatic Center from Jermeel and Smith Construction LP through Byboard, contract number 581-19, a local government purchasing cooperative. We'll have Mr. Harris kind of speak on this.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. In an effort to get our summertime outdoors women who have been running after 10 years, we're having the need to repair the water flume and the open slide steps, platforms that kids and adults walk up to. So part of the action that you have on your day does not deal with the full scope of the work that's needed to be done. The scope of the work that needs to be done is to basically recode the fiberglass steps. And there's about 58 of those steps, as well as kick plates. After 10 years, some of them are rusting. And again, that's a safety issue in order to get those done. And then, the last thing is to paint the entire structure. That would be all of your angle iron and metal that's in that process. In our oversight with regards to bringing this item forward, it only deals with the kick plate. And so, that... with the kick plate, and so that, that number that you see before you is not completing the whole project that's needed, and that's a oversight of staff, and so I would recommend that we reject this item, and then we would come back to the city commission with the adequate proposal that's needing to do all three of those elements. Now, if there's any questions, should I ask?
So we just need to take this then till...
No, that's, we'll take action on it, we'll, we'll take action on it, and his, his recommendation was to reject this item, and then we'll come back with a more comprehensive scope of work that includes all of the...
Okay.
I'm going to reject this...
Any more questions?
I'm sorry. I'm going to reject item G until the staff is able to come back with the complete job scope.
I second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Bowie to reject this item G, seconded by Commissioner Herrera. All in favor, say by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. This particular resolution has been denied. We move on to regular items. Under the regular item agenda, we have consider to take action on ordinance number 2023-06, amending the 2022-2023 fiscal year budget to account for a grant from Keep Texas Beautiful to HEB Community Recycling Grant Program.
Mayor Commissioners, this budget amendment is to create the funding for the city's portion of this, which will be $6,400. The grant that we will be receiving is $30,000, and it's to purchase a vertical baler and a portable yard ramp, and then we will also have some funds remaining for outreach and education. So the budget amendment will come from the general funds unassigned fund balance, the city's portion. So the way this breaks down is the sanitation capital equipment, $30,900, outreach and education materials, $5,500. The city's portion, $6,400 from the unassigned fund balance, and then the grant revenue of $30,000.
Misses, any questions of Mrs. Lloyd?
That portable yard ramp, is that something that's at the recycling center?
It is now.
It is, okay.
I just took a look at it.
And then, okay. And then I read with the, the vertical baler, that it holds so much more than what we have. Yeah.
I was just...
Go ahead, then. Okay, okay.
Any other questions, Misses?
I'm going to approve.
Aye, second.
It's been moved to approve by Commissioner Clark, seconded by Commissioner Herrera. All in favor, say by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Addenda item A B, consider and take action on ordinance number 2023-07, amending the 2022-2023 fiscal year budget to create an economic development project manager position and to appropriate funds for the salary and benefits of this position.
On this item, Mayor Commissioners, this was a recommendation from Garner Economics. In 2022, they were tasked with developing the EDC strategic plan, and they recommended the creation of this project manager position, and in your packet you have the, the draft job description. The budget amendment is for the remaining six months of the fiscal year, and the amount of $42,250 to come from EDC's unassigned fund balance. The EDC held a meeting earlier today, and they approved the creation of the position via resolution 23-04, and then they also approved the budget amendment in resolution 23-05.
Misses, any questions of Mrs. Lloyd regarding this new position?
This Garner Economics project, or was it, it was a report they did on...
It was a comprehensive strategic plan. They did surveys and visited the city. John can elaborate on, on what was done, but it was, it was rather intensive process.
Okay.
As Ms. Lloyd stated, we did a strategic plan for the Economic Development Corporation. That plan looked at all of the current assets that Texas City has to offer from an economic development standpoint, compared that to other communities, what other economic development corporations and departments are doing throughout the region and throughout the state, and they provided a blueprint or a footprint for the next five years of operation. And one of the items that came out of the strategic plan was this particular recommendation. The, the Texas City Economic Development Corporation held a retreat last month, and they reviewed the overall strategic plan, plan again that they adopted last September, and they came up with specific recommendations to move forward within this current year and next year. And one of those was this particular position. Therefore, they recommended to move forward, as Ms. Lloyd stated. They held a meeting today, and they officially authorized it through a resolution, kind of budget amendment, and we're recommending a...
Okay. Thank you, John.
Any other questions, Misses?
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion had been made by Commissioner Herrera to approve this agenda item, seconded by Commissioner Hart. All those in favor, state by the appropriate sign.
Aye.
Aye, aye, all of, all opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you very much. Stuffed y'all up in the... Thank you all so much. Well, to the Commissioners' comments, I'll start with overhearing the cornhole champion, Commissioner Knoxen. Let's go ahead and get that out, 'cause I know it's coming.
No comment.
You said it all later.
Commissioner Herrera?
No comment today, thank you.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim Bowie?
No comments as well.
All right. Commissioner Blazer?
The parade that we had, the St. Patrick's Parade, was really nice. I had a good time. It was fun. It was, it was good. Just set it up perfect. It was great. Thank you.
Commissioner Clark?
And the picnic was, was fun, and the food was amazing.
We, we do wanna officially thank Herr products for co-sponsoring this picnic with us and providing the food, and thank Mr. Tumbelson for working with him to, on that end. The food has been the number one talked about thing at the picnic. So for those of you who missed the picnic, you missed the treat, we'll do it again next year, and we just want to keep getting bigger and better each time. So thank you to that end. I don't have any something to cover, coming as a mayor. Congratulations again to Ms. Turner, to Ms. Creo McCall, Chief Zappal. Thank you for your thirty-five years of great service to the city of Texas City, and, and, and some thirty-five years that's still going. And thank you, Ms. Odom and Ms. Conde Hady. Congratulations again to her for her award. We appreciate all of you. Just do a collective blanket request for anybody in the city of Texas City who has anything to add. You may do so at this time. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Matos.
Yes, so I'm Jessica Matos from the library. Real quick, I wrote it so I don't ramble. And we're pretty pleased, our new front facing catalog is up today, and there's no crashing and no calls complaining about it yet. But if you notice something you want changed, let us know. It's pretty simple. It's more modern. It works better on mobile. You can even take out your eBooks and check those out through that one catalog now, and keep list of what you wanna read. That is up today. For, you know, not normal events that I did wanna mention, so, or not recurring events that we have, there are Saturday the 25th is our blood drive. I can help you sign up, and that's from nine to three. One of the nice things we like to remind people about our particular blood drive at our location is that it is inside the building, so it is accessible for anyone who has a disability or needs handicap accessibility to get in and who still wants to save life and give blood. So that's on the 25th, and I can help you sign up. Wednesday, the 29th, Annika Federal Credit Union has a, Anne Ramos is coming, and she's gonna be talking about Eight Steps to Financial Success. So if you know anyone who wants to come in and get some financial pointers, I send them our way, because we are registering, 'cause she's gonna bring refreshments, and she needs to know how much to bring. And Thursday, April the 6th, our awesome student-led group at UTMB, taking our best shot, is gonna be there at 10:00 a.m. talking about pediatric, physical fitness, and nutrition, and it's gonna be talking about how it's connected to all aspects of mental health, school performance, physical health, so all aspects of your life and continuing growth. And with that, that's at 10:00 a.m. They're gonna have food, some free recipes, and also a free t-shirt for people, so register for that, and I can help that. And this is early, but I wanted to announce it, and if anyone wants a flyer to put up. This is the, I've got the Military Veteran Peer Network. I have a contact there who scheduled a free marriage tune-up, and it's for military and veteran couples. It's to strengthen communication, trust, reliance, commitment, and, and romance. And stuff, that's gonna be Saturday. It's a whole day thing from nine to three, forty-five-ish at the library on May 20, or May 6th, Saturday, May 6th. And that one right there, space is limited and such, so if you know any veterans, if you want a flyer to put up somewhere, and you have a spot where you know veterans are, let me know. I've got flyers. And that's what I've got.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jessica. Anyone else?
I was just gonna comment that the, the picnic was, was outstanding, but Creo McCall and I, we participated for the first time in the cornhole competition. And, and I asked Jermarcus, who was the coordinator of the event, what place that we come in. And we know Commissioner Knoxen, you know, he walked around all day in his truck. But, so Jermarcus said that Creo and I came in most improved. Anyway, we had fun. Couple announcements. I wanted to announce that the, our art festival is getting ready to come up on April the 1st, and on the 25th of March, we will be collecting art from artists from all over the county, here in Texas City as well. That will be from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Each artist is allowed to put in up to three pieces of art, and so in the past, we've averaged probably over 500 pieces of art. That's, that's on display, in addition to feature artists that were invited. So we're looking forward to that. Also, on April the 3rd, at the outdoor pool, April the 3rd, we will start our private party reservations for residents. And that will be on April the 3rd at the Nestler Center, and that will be from 6:00 to 8:00. So I want to get that word out, 'cause we, we sell out probably eighty percent within the first hour of that.
6:00 a.m., right?
6:00 a.m., yes.
At the Larry or Nestler?
It will be at the Nestler, sorry, Nestle.
Okay.
Nestle.
You said Nestler, but then you said Larry, 'cause they're lined up at five o'clock in the morning.
Well, they were treating it like Best Buy, so they were lining up. So we decided to do a ride. So this is a whole lot calmer, everyone's there to get a ticket, and everybody could see the order in which they would, you know, book, they make their reservation. And then the last thing, since we will not have a meeting party, that's gonna be our citywide annual Easter Hunt. That would be at Carbo's Park. That is on April the 5th, so it's at the same time that we will be having our city commission meeting as well. So we'll be doing that over the next day as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harris, UCA. Anyone else? Ms. Odom?
Yes. Just quickly, I wanna brag on our city. We had about thirty clerks and court professionals from all over the state visit us on Saturday to, we hosted an exam site for the certification exam, and they bragged so much on our city and the way we look, and how much fun our city was having, because obviously the big thing was going on here. And a few people even joined in the parade as spectators come out, so I'm always proud that the city has such a good show for people. Very, we had clerks from Odessa, San Antonio, Beaumont, Dallas area, so all over the state. So thank you all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Odom. Appreciate that. Anyone else in the city?
Mayor, I apologize. I forgot this very important event. Also, on April the 1st, we're doing the Soldier Ride, and we're hosting the Warrior Warriors based out of San Antonio. This year, they're anticipating about forty-five riders. So it will be a 14.5-mile ride, started at Bay Street Park. They will go to the Dyke and back, down Skyline, through the park, and then we'll ride down Sixth Street as well. So be nice if folks can come out and cheer them on. It's just amazing to see. So this will be their second year here in Texas City. They love it.
What does it start?
It will start around 8:30. They will be out probably at 7:00 a.m. assembling the bikes, and so the, the Warriors pretty much come after that. So they have a team of folks that pull all of the bikes out and put it together. So when the Warriors come out, they get off of their chartered bus, and they're pretty much already in the calisthenics, stretching, and so Commissioner Carter was out there last year, and so you saw...
And you ride with them, or you're just there to cheer them on?
There to cheer them on. But also, you can't ride them, 'cause they, they're good. They may look your height, nah, I'm just...
Oh, that's a challenge. I'm letting Keith ride. I'm letting Keith ride.
It was a great program last year. They, they finished at the Nestler Center. We had lunch and ate lunch with them, just to meet some of those individuals, and, you know, personally thanking for their service, and it was great. And so they said they had such a great time. They wanted to come back, and each year they want to come back, and we'd definitely welcome them. So thank you to that end, Mr. Harris. Anyone else in the city of Texas City? All right. Not willing to take a motion to adjourn?
I'm going, Mayor.
Second.
The adjourn.
I have a piece you look at.
It seems like, you know, a lot of these cities, they share the frame of parenting and that, and...
Absolutely good. Just man, I'm glad you keep business. I guess you have to get permission to talk in your city.
We have some, some good musicians, good singers. It's, you know, more of the contemporary worship, so that's what we'll have this morning.
Okay. Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
I remember something...
Is there something that you have to have, something that says like food, you have to speak?
You do, you do. You have to fill out a public comment form.
This is not supposed to be...
You have to fill out a public...
Hating?
You have, but to speak for the public to speak, you have to fill out a public comment form, and give, and it has to be turned into the mayor prior to the meeting.
So he's finished with whatever the public wants to talk about?
It's always been like that. Any public, any meeting is like that, anyone you go to.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
He was, I just tweaked like, very, very, very small things, and he started hitting his driver over the range into the street.
Oh, he should still be there.
He can't have those. That's immediate.
This is Chief Zapp. Hello, my daughter Tia.
Hi, nice to meet you.
I like that.
Hey, how's it going? Good to see you.
Hey, you have to ask special permission to speak at a public city council meeting?
Uh, not special permission. You just have to sign up in advance.
Well, that's what this other woman that wanted the permission was just saying, and I was like, so what, a man's secret?
The answer is no.
Yeah, I wanted to speak and everything. I have my, I also want, we just have to fill out something or whatever for the public to come in and speak.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's our standard procedure. If it was coming before him, fill out the form, give it to the city's secretary, the one of the staff, and you're welcome to speak, and we'd love to have you do.
Well, that's why I came here, 'cause we're supposed to be open to the public, if they have a problem.
They are.
And so we have to fill out some form to be able to speak, uh, public, yeah, in the public city council meeting.
So that's our established procedure. It's approved. We're not, we're not, we're not denying anything.
Because they have to fill out some form.
Yeah, all they gotta do is name and the subject they want to speak on, and that's it. I'll be glad to get you. That's a city council meeting.
That's the procedure that our commission has adopted. You can adopt a set of policies.
Okay, but do you understand that that requires the citizens' fourth amendment?
You can speak at any commission meeting is what I'm...
Or not raising my hand, he was speaking and he looked right at me and he would not have...
And that's because their procedure that the commission adopted long before he was in charge.
Was this right here, going on my personal information and all that?
Some people don't use the smallest app to get their list.
I'm gonna make it easy.
Some people don't use the smallest app to get their list.
I have to make it easier.
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 Okay, that's a good point.
The commission cannot take any, take on any...
As a space that... But before you understand that the commission cannot take action on any matter not appearing on the agenda, you may or may not be allowed to address the commission depending on the subject matter, as the public has a right to send two hours of prior notice on items to be discussed by the commission. Please note that there is a three...
Look, Pops was cutting.
Sir, sir, you can't film it there. Out here you can, it's fine, I don't have a problem with that. Now, we, we get ready to close, see you later. I'm not touching, so we get ready to close, okay? Now, I can, I can answer you.
Tell me why I can't film you.
No, no, sir, goodbye.
Is that wrong?
All right, uh, we get ready to close down, so we asking everybody to leave, please?
No, I'm waiting.
See you later. We, we, everybody's leaving, you're leaving now.
No.
I'm, I'm finna set the alarm and close the door.
What's his name to give me his car?
Okay, what, what, what's his car?
Uh, he told me to wait here.
No. We're gonna close, I'm not gonna argue with you, okay?
So, you're getting lost or what?
Nah.
You need to de-escalate.
Okay, come on, come on.
You need to de-escalate.
Well, you know what I can de-escalate? We're getting ready, we getting ready to set the alarm, do you understand?
I'm waiting for the...
Okay. What, what man?
I forgot what his name is.
Where's he at?
He went to...
So, you need to de-escalate, you need to calm down, sir. Okay, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sit here and debate with you. Well, I have to secure this place. There he is, okay. There we go.
He's trying to tell me I need leave, so I'm trying to...
We getting ready to lock the, set the alarms.
He's taking a higher management, so he's told me to sit here and wait so I can get my, get his car. So, you wanna violate my rights too?
Come on, let's go, we gonna lock the place up, sir.
We all a bunch of tyrants over here in Texas City.
We gonna set the alarm.
You're a bunch of tyrants.
Right.
Tell me why I can't sit there and, and look through that window.
The door's that way, sir.
Yeah, I know the door's that way.
Right. Yesterday, see you later.
Alan, what's your badge number, Alan?
Uh, eight-two-two-eight.
Eight-two-two-eight?
Yes.
So, I know who to file a formal complaint against.
Thank you, sir.
What, you think that's funny?
Boy, you're a class five to play with.
Boy, I'm playing with you right now. You don't know who you're playing with. I'm a citizen, I have rights. God dang, this is how y'all treat people around here?
I was gonna finish up with our conversation. Uh, you probably saw and saw that there was information on the screen that at ten minutes after the meeting is over, we close the building. So, and that's to secure and set the alarm, so that's, that's all that is.
That's fine.
In regards to the other item that we were talking about, if you read the statute related to open meetings and you read the information related to citizen comments, an organization has a right to set a policy and a procedure and, and are, and set the guidelines. Technically, the law states that, the statute states that, um, it actually has to be something that is on the agenda. Now, our mayor and commission, they allow individuals to speak of things that are not on the agenda, but they've established a set of procedures and one of those procedures is, is that you have to fill out the form.
Okay, but here's the problem with that. Your policies and procedures do not trump my rights.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not arguing about your rights.
Okay, I have the right to come to a city council meeting and voice my, my concerns and everything of what I have witnessed and everything.
Absolutely.
And I continue to witness, even trying to attend a meeting so that I can address these concerns.
You absolutely have the right to speak. There are guidelines that can be, uh, in, uh, in place by the...
This is just basically saying that I'm gonna screen everything that comes through city, uh, the city council meeting.
No.
That's all that's saying. So, then why does it have to be approved?
There's a, the mayor is the one who conducts the meeting and the mayor is the one who has the right to conduct the meeting. And again, if you read the statute...
Well, no, I think it's by law that y'all have to conduct these meetings.
If, if you read the statute, it specifically talks about what you can and cannot do and our city's in compliance with that.
Uh, Mr. Brinson.
Brinson, yeah.
Look, I'm a godly Christian...
Likewise.
Law-abiding citizen.
Likewise.
Okay? But when wrong is being done, it needs to be addressed so that it can be fixed.
I think we're of a different opinion.
Okay, I mean, let, let me put it to you like this. I put in a public information records request, was harassed by the girl that does that, the secretary, and then I didn't even get but half of what I requested.
So...
I, I, I requested a copy of all the, the, the city employees, their, their title and their salaries. I didn't get that.
Right.
Okay, only got some other little information that I requested that day. And you were here, because you gave me your car, I talked to you about it, okay?
Yeah, and I, and I haven't seen your open records request, uh, but...
Well, and I wanted to bring that to the mayor's attention this, you know, tonight.
And...
That, hey, you know, this is supposed to be about transparency. Our inherent God-given right, why are you having, why are y'all having a pastor open the, the, the meeting and prayer when all of our laws were stemmed off of God's law and everything, but yet you won't even let God's children speak? The, the right of the citizen.
Yeah, and, and that's, you and I have a disagreement over that. And again, I'm telling you what our city commission has adopted, they've adopted that policy, it's been reviewed by our city attorney and, and it meets the statute...
Well, I'll be here first and tomorrow morning to talk to the city attorney myself.
Well, you might wanna call first, 'cause he's a contract employee and he's not here every single day.
Well, then y'all need to call him up and, and everything, man, and tell him he, he needs to report to duty, because I don't think y'all are getting very good information if your city attorney is basically stating that y'all can censor the public and everything and that you're requiring the public to give their personal information violating their Fourth Amendment rights.
Yeah, I don't believe that's the case, but, uh, you're...
That's exactly what that is.
You're welcome to visit with him and that is the policy that's been adopted. And again, I appreciate you being here tonight.
Okay, it's your policies don't trump my rights.
I appreciate you being here tonight, is there anything else I can help you with?
No, sir, you've been most helpful and I appreciate you and everything, okay? But seriously, y'all got some issues over here in Texas City that y'all really need to get fixed. And before y'all, before it cost the taxpayers of Texas City, you know, thousands upon thousands of millions of dollars in everything, lawsuits, it's so much simpler for y'all just to allow educated individual citizens to come in and address these problems and for your city council to start taking action on these things.
You're welcome to come to our next meeting, you'll be given that opportunity.
So, when does this have to be filled, filled out by?
Just presented prior to the meeting.
Presented prior to the meeting?
Yes, sir.
So, five minutes before the meeting, ten minutes, who do I give it to?
The city secretary.
The, the same person that I had an issue with and everything, who couldn't even give me but half the information I requested.
When an open records request is submitted, that information is sent out to the departments who hold those records. Those departments provide that information, send it back to the city secretary, the city secretary compiles that and then provides that to you.
I get, I understand. Are, are you the city secretary's manager?
No, I am.
Okay.
And that's the information that was gathered from the departments.
And that's the part that I'm trying to make, sir, is basically, I didn't get but a portion of what I requested, okay? And whatever happens after I submit that paper to you, whatever happens from that point forward is out of my control. That's on you, that's your problem. But y'all have a certain amount of time by law...
Ten days.
By the AG's laws and everything in the state of Texas to provide the information that I requested.
Provide copies of records of things that we have that are...
You don't have a copy of, of the name and, and title and salary of every employee in the city of Texas City?
I haven't seen what was provided to you, okay? So, that information is sent to the various departments who holds the various records of the city, they gather together, give it to the...
Your human resources department's right here.
Yeah, I know, I know, sir. And what I'm saying is...
They don't know who all is employed?
That's not what I'm saying. Those are your words, not my words.
Well, so then how come I didn't get what I asked for?
I told you, I did not see the document that you're talking about, so I can't verify one way or the other if what you're saying is accurate.
Okay, well, and I noticed she was in there tabbing up the minutes and everything too, so obviously there wasn't any disciplinary action for the way she wants to address a citizen either.
So, correct me if I, correct me if I'm wrong, you said you were gonna send me a link and of the information, the video.
Oh, okay, well, I can still do that.
Have you done that?
I can still do that.
Have you done that?
I have not, but I figured talking to you and, and addressing it to you then would've been good enough, 'cause that's exactly, I believe, what you told me.
I, I...
You said I can either take it or you can send it to me and I saw me...
And I'm talking about, you were, at the time, you were talking about a form. I said we did not have a form, I said I'd be glad to write down your information at that time. You said that you would send me a link that would show what transpired. So, I have spoken with the employee about that and I've, I've listened to her side of the story, you were gonna provide me with some additional information.
Okay.
And I said I was gonna take the appropriate action.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Are you, are you over the marshal view then, too?
No.
No?
Not directly.
Okay.
I do indirectly oversee municipal court, uh, or oversee municipal court. That supervisor is the supervisor of the marshal.
Okay, but not over the council meetings?
Well, I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
So, you're over him if he's in the court?
No, I'm, I'm, I did, those are not my words, those are not my words.
Okay.
So, he has a direct supervisor.
And that be the least two for Texas City?
And that direct supervisor, no, is the municipal court manager.
Municipal court manager?
Yes.
Okay, so, but...
And there, one of his responsibilities, as indicated on the slide that's shown at the end of the commission meeting, is that city hall will be closed ten minutes after the meeting concludes.
And that's, that's, that's perfectly fine, and I, and I, and I'm not, I'm not upset about that. What I'm upset about is that I went over by the mayor's office and he's like, "You can't record in there, it's a window, open window, you can't trespass what the eyes can see," okay? And this guy's just jumping up and down, hooting and hollering at me and everything, you need to leave, it's just, it's time to go anyways. I'm like, "I'm waiting for this gentleman's business card," okay? Well, you can wait, I was, and I'm like, "Oh, he told me to wait right here for him, man, just get, give it a minute." Well, where did, where's he at? I say, "He went to his office to go get it." I was like, "Why don't you de-escalate a little bit?" And he's just sitting there getting all pissy with me. What is it with people when there's a camera around that people start acting stupid?
I'll let you answer that question, I think you know as well as anybody, people aren't used to that. It puts them in an uncomfortable situation.
Look, look, look what's right there, okay? There, there, look, there's a big old camera right there looking at us. You're recording us, so how come we can't record you?
No one said you couldn't.
That's exactly right, because it's all right.
Have you want, so, let me ask you a question. Have you heard me say at any point you can't do that?
Absolutely not, because you've been respectful, I have no issues with you at all, Mr. Brinson, you've always been respectful, cordial, polite, professional and all that and I appreciate it. But it's gonna take individuals like yourself and, and, and me to get it through some of these other people's heads and everything who wanna keep going around violating people's rights. This is a violation of my right. This piece of paper that you're saying I have to fill out in order to talk.
Well, according to the statute...
I don't care what your policy says, it's a violation of my constitutional right. Your policies cannot trump my rights.
So, I think we have a disagreement about what the statute says. Yes, you have rights, there's no doubt about that. In order to speak at a public meeting, a specifically a commission meeting, the entity has the ability to create rules around that.
To censor people.
I'm not, those are your words.
Well, that's what it seems like y'all are doing by, by requiring people to do such a thing.
Asking someone their name and what they wanna speak about, that to me doesn't seem, doesn't seem like...
What does it matter?
Well, technically, it does matter.
I tell you what, if your, if your attorney, city attorney ain't gonna be here in the morning, I tell you what I'll do. I'll call Texas Attorney General's office in the morning and I'll file my complaint directly through them that you're violating, uh, citizens' rights and everything because you're requiring them to put their name and address and everything and phone number on a piece of paper and the topic that they wanna talk about in a public, open meeting.
So, make sure you mention that it's a city commission meeting and then also make sure that you mission, mention that it's...
What's the difference between a commission meeting and, and...
So, I think it's important to mention that. And then I would also state that, uh...
Is this not the city council meeting?
The, the statute that allows individuals to speak at those public meetings states that the entity can create rules around that, that govern that.
Yeah, you can limit it to three minutes like you said, but just who speaks and what topic they speak on.
That's one, well, let me back up, that's where I was trying to go. It also states that if what the individual is speaking about is not on the agenda, the commission does not have to allow that to occur.
Be ludicrous, I mean, this is, this is the city council meeting, is it not? Yes or no?
It is.
Okay, so, any issues with the city should be brought up to the city council at their meeting, correct?
You're welcome to do that, yes.
Well, but that's what it's here for.
You're welcome to do that, yes.
That's what it's here for, that's the sole purpose of it.
That's one of the purposes.
Well, but, but, but also to discuss the business stuff of the, the city and all that too. I, but that's what it's here for.
It's one of the purposes, yes, sir.
Saying, okay, so if I show up, I don't understand why I have to have some kind of pre-filled out thing where you can sit there and, and deny me and censor me and all that. That, no other city does that, no other county does that.
Actually, I, I, that's not correct, I'm aware of other cities that do exactly that.
Okay.
Sometimes they make you fill it out at the end of the meeting, sometimes they do it prior to the beginning. I know for a fact that's done in other communities. Regardless of that, I appreciate you being here, um, and I'll be glad to pass that on to the city attorney. You're welcome to give me a call tomorrow after I've spoken with him and I will let you know what he has to say about our policy.
So, so, okay, so let me just clarify, if I wanna write Mickey Mouse, one, two, three, Disney World Lane, uh, for, uh, you know, Orlando, Florida and everything on there and five-five-five, five-five-five, five-five-five-five on there, I just want to talk about some stuff that I've observed with the city and city employees and everything, that's gonna be acceptable.
Uh, the mayor will take that under consideration.
I'm sorry, but I, I have to laugh at that, sir.
All right, well.
Because I don't understand why Mickey Mouse himself couldn't come in here and talk if he wanted.
Is there anything else that you need?
Mickey Mouse is a citizen too.
I'm telling you of what the policy has been of the city and what the statute states.
Well, what y'all are doing is y'all, y'all are censoring the, the citizens and everything from making complaints against what's going on and what's transpiring. I mean, where are y'all with transparency?
Those are your words.
No, that's what it is. Transparency cannot.
May I help you with anything else?
Look, I was coming to talk because I wanted more transparency in Texas City.
I appreciate you doing that.
And the city should want more transparency.
I appreciate you doing that.
For the citizens and taxpayers. We, we, we want transparency. But when you want to hide in everything and not talk to people and everything, that's not being very transparent. Whenever I show up.
I'm not aware of anybody doing that.
Whenever I show up to, you know, police activity, it, it's already been, you know, through the, the Supreme Court that we have the right to film police in their, uh, uh, course of business, okay?
No one's denying you the right to.
They have. Texas City Police has.
I'm saying right now, nobody's denying.
But I'm saying, but, 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 but this is why I tried to come to talk, okay? Because i- i- until the city council calls the, uh, police chief and says, hey, you ain't knock this crap off and everything because news is news, press is press and that's somebody's First Amendment God-given right, unalienable, okay? It can't be taken from me.
So please, come to our next meeting, fill out the form and you'll be ready to go.
I will, I'll fill it out Mickey Mouse and everything, one, two, three.
Good to see you.
You know.
Good to see you.
Walt Disney Boulevard and everything and I better be able to talk.
Good to see you.
When he calls Mickey Mouse, he better call Mickey Mouse.
Good to see you.
Okay? You better tell him, he better call Mickey Mouse. Or otherwise I'm gonna tell him to go fuck himself in his meeting. Fucking clowns. That's what this is, clowns. This fucker here is, this wannabe fucking clown marshal fucker here. Need some more lights, I can see. Number six. Why you gotta act like a clown? You understand I'm a citizen and I have constitutionally protected rights, right? There's no reason to act like a clown. Take that freaking, take that clown costume off. Can, can I ask you a question? Can I ask you a question? Of course not. Clown, you're a clown. Where's your bozo nose? What a clown.